Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. First, I want to apologize for and thank you for your patience. There's obviously a miscommunication. We're not sure what happened yet with getting the building open instead up. And so we want to thank you for your patience while we got there so we could be on television. Let's go ahead and start with a pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could do a roll call?
Commissioner Clemens?
Here.
Commissioner Perrott?
Here.
Commissioner Cybo?
Yep.
Commissioner Ferby?
Here.
Commissioner Lofton?
Commissioner Waterman?
Here.
Looking at tonight's agenda, is there any changes that need to be made? Any comments on the agenda? Okay. If not, if we could go ahead and take a vote to approve the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, if we can look at the minutes from the June 5th. We have two different meetings we need to approve minutes from. June 5th meeting, were there any questions, comments, changes to those notes that you all noticed? Okay. Then let's go ahead, can we go ahead and take a vote on?
I move that we approve the, actually, can we just, I move that we approve both the minutes of June 5th and the July 10th training session.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. All right. And it doesn't look like we have any old business. So this evening, we're going to be doing a public hearing, VA 12-03, which is a request for a variance to allow an open carport to remain within the required setback. The property addressed as 2310 Yucca is located on a tract of land described as Lot 10, Block 27 of the Silver Heights subdivision in the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico. The applicant is Jeffrey Rudolph, the owner. And for those of you who are here for that, the way this will work is, well, first we'll have you come up and swear, anybody who wants to testify will need to come up and swear an oath. If you do, that doesn't mean you have to testify, but if you don't, you're not able to testify. So anybody who would be interested in presenting with regards to this on either side, we'll have you come up and, Jamie, you would go ahead and swear the name.
Anybody who might want to have?
Anybody who can go back and take the issue. Where are you going to go? You're going to be?
Oh. Okay.
Do you repeat after me? Aye.
Aye.
Your name?
Peter Russell.
You solemnly swear?
You solemnly swear.
That the testimony I am about to give?
That's the testimony you're about to give?
Will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth on penalty of perjury.
Be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth on penalty of perjury.
Okay. Then the way, the process for proceeding here is, we will have a presentation from staff. After staff gives their presentation, then the applicant has the chance to give up, get up and give their presentation. Anybody in favor, who wants to speak, who's been sworn in, can then speak. And after that, if there's anybody who's opposed to that, they have the opportunity to speak at that point. So if we could start with the staff report, please.
I do actually want to make a?
Oh, yes, yeah, thank you very much for reminding me.
This morning, I received a call from one of the planning commissioners who noticed in reviewing the project that when an applicant has multiple permits pending for a decision, the applicant can choose to consolidate the permits into a single request, consolidate and pay just a single fee, and have the body of the highest standing make the decision. In this case, Mr. Rudolph is seeking a variance, but he will also need to seek an encroachment permit from the town council. So he has the option of consolidating this permit. Jamie called him this afternoon to inform him of this option, and my understanding is, he said, well, he would just like to proceed the way it's set up. But I did want to inform the commission of this, and I also wanted to mention that because of this, you know, multiple permit, we would only charge a single fee. We will only charge for the variance fee if he chooses not to consolidate and then can move forward with the encroachment without the fee.
Do I understand the question? Go forward with the variance because that's going to go to the encroachment? Yes. Because of that, because of the?
Yes.
Okay. Well, we have it on here. Let's see what we can do about this. Let's, rather than go to another entity, we'll try to continue with it.
Okay.
I just have one question, and forgive me if this is included in the, in the staff report, but how does it work if there are, if there's a different outcome for the variance than there is for the encroachment permit? Does the variance request serve as a recommendation, or what happens if there's conflicting decisions from us and from the council? I know they're two separate requests.
It's a great question. I really don't know the answer. We haven't been confronted with this kind of issue before. My guess is that if you recommend it, then he goes forward to the council, and he has a recommendation supporting him, even though he still needs this other permission. If you deny it, he can appeal the denial, and it still goes forward to the council. So, you know, his avenues to, you know, securing, you know, a decision, his benefit, I don't think are harmed by having the multiple hearings. But I don't know the answer of how the conflict would be resolved, except through the appeal process, and the council would be hearing the appeal. So to a certain extent, they might even at that meeting choose to consolidate the appeal if that's the case with the encroachment permit. I just don't know.
Anything else?
No, not at the time.
Okay. So, Mr. Rudolph, you understand everything that was explained, and you still want to go ahead with the variance request? I understand, okay. Okay. All right, then. Staff, give their presentation.
Jim, do you know magic buttons? Or I can go. Oh. Here's the magic button. Okay. We have VA 12-03, and it's at 2310 Yucca. The applicant is Jeffrey Rudolph. The request for a variance to allow an open carport to remain within the required setback. The property is addressed as 2310 Yucca. It's located on a tract of land described as Lot 10, Block 27 of the Silver Heights subdivision in the town of Silver City. The applicant is Jeffrey Rudolph, the owner. The commissioners have this map printed out, which is probably easier for you to see, but it's a map of the, a part of the property, including the residence, cement pad, and two garages. This is a photo facing east showing the carport that's in the area where the sidewalk will continue when the work with the town continues with the sidewalks in that area. This is just another view, still facing east. And a closer-up view of the cement pad and the carport in the area it was placed. The Land Use Code, Section 3.3.2, Subsection C11B, allows private garages, carports, and off-street parking areas used to serve the residents of the property allowed as residential accessory uses, provided that the garage or carport is located at least 20 feet back from the closest edge of the right-of-way of the street that provides access to the garage or carport. And a variance to this section of Land Use Code will allow a structure to be built if strict enforcement of the Land Use Code would result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships for the applicant, and that by granting the variance, the spirit of the Land Use Code will be observed, public safety and welfare secured, and substantial justice done. Under no condition shall a variance permit a use that is not otherwise permitted in the zone district where the property is located. The applicant will also need to pursue an encroachment permit if the structure is allowed to remain, and that's the permit that we were just discussing with Mr. Rudolph that will go before the city council. Madam Chair, would you like me to read the required findings?
Yes, please.
There are seven required findings. The Planning and Zoning Commission shall only approve a variance if it makes the following findings, as required by the Land Use Code and Zoning Code, Section 6.13.19, Subsection D. Number one, the hardship of which the applicant complains is one that is unique to the applicant rather than one suffered by the neighbors or the general public, and the hardship relates to the applicant's land or property, and the hardship was not created by the deliberate action of the applicant or by one under his control, and reasonable remedies are not presently available. The granting of the variance is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. The granting of the variance is in harmony with the purposes and intents of the Land Use Code. The granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood surrounding the property where the variance is proposed, and otherwise is not detrimental to the public welfare. And the variance will not result in the extension, expansion, or enlargement of a non-conforming structure in violation of Article 7, and will not authorize the initiation of a non-conforming use of land. And I'd like it also to be noted that this case came to our office not as an application from the applicant, but he was sent a letter and leave a citation by the Code Enforcement Division and responded to that. That's where this application originated. And the staff opinion, it's a review, in its review of the application, the Community Development Department found the application to be complete. It is the opinion of the staff that the applicant does not meet findings 1, 3, 4, 5, 6, or 7. Are there any slides that you would like to see again? Photos? I'll leave it on the findings.
Now, I do realize I did not ask earlier if any of the commissioners have had any ex parte conversations regarding this matter? Okay. Okay. Anything else from staff on this? Any questions for staff?
How many feet into the setback does the carport encroach, and how many feet into the right-of-way does it encroach?
Measure that because of the line of sight. Peter Pinya from the Public Works Department stated it's clearly in the area that the sidewalk will go, and it's also definitely closer than the 20-foot setback that's required.
I think we need to make sure it's clearly there.
And if you look on the flat?
About five and a half, five and a half inches.
If you look on the flat, you can tell where the cement is there that it's placed on.
Mr. Russell, you got something to add?
I just wanted to say that it goes, it fully occupies the setback. All 20 feet of the setback are occupied, and some of the public right-of-way.
About five and a half feet, would you say?
I guess.
What was on the other, okay, you have sidewalk, and then you have the carport, and then what's the rest of the block there?
There's a chain link fence on Mr. Rudolph's property that was placed there before the new Land Use Code.
Okay.
And this was referred by Code Enforcement because of the encroachment of the carport. The clear-sight issue is not any?
It's a clear block. It doesn't affect the clear-sight.
Okay. Because there was, there was a comment by one staff member, of course, it wasn't police or anything, but it doesn't violate anything as far as clear, clear sight, because it's not on the corner. Okay?
The citation came about because there was another person in the area who came to get a building permit for a carport in the setback, and was advised that we can't get a building permit in the setback unless you have a variance. And so then the person said, oh, well, what about over here? And so then the Code Enforcement went over there, and sure enough, there was a carport that had been built in the setback. So the notice of, you know, violation was issued, and then Mr. Rudolph came in, and so he was offered the opportunity to apply for the variance, but it would be retroactively. The carport was already installed, and it came about because somebody else sought to do the same thing, and was told, no, you need a variance to do this. You can't proceed.
What is the process? Say you get the money with the city, and you're going to put sidewalks in. You have two situations here a little bit. You have the carport, which we're looking at right now, but then you also have that fencing that was pre-existing to the Land Use Code. What is the process if you want to do a sidewalk? Are those two things approached separately? And how does the city handle that?
So what the city would do, Madam Chair and Commissioner, is that the city would require the person to remove any obstructions that are in the right-of-way at the time that a sidewalk were to be constructed. So, for example, in the case of the carport, you could make it a condition of a variance if you chose to do so, say, but when the city gives you 90 days' notice to remove the carport, you will have to do so. An encroachment permit always has that clause. So because there's a requirement to go before the council for the encroachment permit, that requirement after 90 days' notice to remove whatever encroachments are in the right-of-way would be enforced. So the city will clear its right-of-way?
The fenced area that was prior to?
It would clear that as well.
Okay.
It would require the owner to remove it. The city won't go in with the crew to remove it. It would require the owner to do it.
Okay.
Do you know when the carport was erected?
I, I don't.
Maybe, maybe Mr. Rudolph can address that in his remarks.
Within a year.
Yeah. That satisfies my question.
What is the proceeding if somebody has requested to remove something for a sidewalk, and they don't?
Then it goes to court.
Move your microphone.
Mrs. Waterman?
Can you use your microphone?
Oh, I thought it was. Oh, huge.
Oh, okay. Are you able to hear the speakers?
Okay.
Okay. We just need some questions. Anything else for the, any questions for the staff, or anything else from the staff? Okay. If the applicant would like to come up to the podium and present these questions.
If I may, I have kind of a little summary, rather than me just speaking to you and so you having to take all these notes, if I can pass them out so you can read them. Can I do that?
Okay. Do you have some lights then? Yeah, we'll let a light. If we can get some lights up here.
And you'll be going on the case against this, so maybe? After reading the zoning code of 2010, I'd like to state that first, I was not aware that there was a Land Use Code as of 2010 that had the 20-foot setback. The reason why I put the carport in was basically for safety reasons. I have pictures that I would like to pass out that are pictures that I took, so to give you more of an overview of what I'm dealing with as far as what I'm talking about, safety issues, if I may.
Do you want to start with Nick on that end, and we'll just?
The reason why is the slope of the driveway that the carport is not parched.
So the commissioner Cybo will look at him and pass him down?
Can you hear me okay?
This is going to make for fascinating television.
You're saying that the original driveway has a slope to it?
Yes.
And you built the carport next to it that does not have a slope, and you have access at the end of that carport into the house?
I do.
Without having to go up the slope of the driveway?
I do. The reason why I put the carport on the flat surface was because in the winter, that being on the north side, that sloopy driveway that's been there for generations, the house was built in 1947, and I believe that that driveway has probably been there pretty close to all that time. The, in the winter, the sloped driveway gets very icy, and it does not melt. And so I virtually can't get up the driveway even with a four-wheel-drive vehicle, because it tends to do this. That's why I built, had the carport put in where it is, on the lower, flat driveway, where I have the access to my shop downstairs, and I can get inside, and, and there's no ice. It solves the problem of ice. If you'd like me to go through these, the sheet that I gave you, very briefly, I'd be glad to do that.
Yes, please, because we have it on television, and they obviously can't see it. It's wonderful.
First, the request for the, of the variance, the reason for the carport was, number one, I'm approaching or have arrived at being a senior citizen, and I have to look at the future and the fact that when you're a senior, you have to think about, more about safety. The incline of the driveway prohibits safe travel by foot or car due to ice pack, northern exposure, slow ice melt. B, garage cannot be used or entered safely because of slippery conditions. That's the sloped driveway, not the lower driveway that the carport is on. I am taking presently a medication that at times makes me a little unsteady on my feet, which exacerbates the problem of a slippery drive. The solution would be to put the carport on the flat surface. I enter from the carport, as I've said, there's been no intent to violate the code. I was not aware of the code. I was told that there was no setback. The contractor that sold me the carport said, and I quote, "I've done this for six years and never had a problem." I looked at the carport at her business, it was right on the road. I was also told by the Planning and Zoning, by Mr. Russell and Jamie, by reading, that the commercial was different than, than residential, which of course, she didn't say anything to me about it. She just said, "I've never had a problem." I also took pictures, as you see, of a carport on Swan and 24th that was right on the road. So I figured, well, I don't need a permit. There's carports around that are close to the road. I was not aware of the 2010 Land Use Code being changed for the 25, or 20-foot setback. So I went ahead and did it. Not looking to violate anything, and I probably should have gone to the city and not just taken her word for it. I, as far as neighbor issues are concerned, I sent out 33 letters, talked to 15 owners personally in my neighborhood. I got zero responses. The 15 neighbors that I talked to in my immediate area that I knew, not one of them had objection to my carport. As a matter of fact, some of them said it enhanced the neighborhood. I don't see that necessarily, but they said it, they thought it enhanced it. The driveway, like I said, has been, the sloped driveway and the lower driveway have been in place for decades. The fence that actually has encroached has been in place decades. As far as sidewalks are concerned, that was an issue. I don't know of any plans to put in sidewalks. That neighborhood has been there for 60, 70 years, and they haven't put in sidewalks in 60 or 70 years. The streets themselves need to be fixed. I'd be more than willing to say, yeah, you put in, you want to put in sidewalks, I'll move whatever I have to move. I'm not trying to buck any kind of rules or regulations. But I personally don't think it's anything that's going to happen in the next few years, I wouldn't imagine. If it does, then I'll move what I need to move. That's what I'm asking, I'm asking for the variance based on safety for myself, and that's it. And I thank you, and that's all I have to say.
When you went in, I think that you heard the reading, just go over the findings that you have to meet.
Right.
And when you went in, I, staff probably told you, you need to meet those findings.
Right.
So you do need to be able to address those seven findings.
I, well?
Do you have a couple of those?
I have the findings required. It says, "A hardship of applicant complains is that the one unique to the applicant rather than one suffered by the neighbors." The hardship is that the driveway, I mean, I can't get into my house, basically, in the winter if it snows with a slippery driveway. The fence that actually has encroached has been in place decades. As far as sidewalks are concerned, that was an issue. I don't know of any plans to put in sidewalks. That neighborhood has been there for 60, 70 years and they haven't put in sidewalks in 60 or 70 years. The streets themselves need to be fixed. I'd be more than willing to say, yeah, you put in, you want to put in sidewalks, I'll move whatever I have to move. I'm not trying to buck any kind of rules or regulations. But I personally don't think it's anything that's going to happen in the next two years, I wouldn't imagine. If it does, then I'll move what I need to move. That's what I'm asking, I'm asking for the variance based on safety for myself. And that's it. And I thank you. And that's all I have to say.
When you went in, I think that you heard the reading, just go over the findings that you have to meet?
Right.
And when you went in, staff probably told you you need to meet those findings?
Right.
So you do need to be able to address those seven findings?
I, well...
Do you have a couple of things?
I have the findings required, it says, "A hardship of applicant complains is that the one unit to the applicant rather than one suffered by the neighbors." The hardship is that the driveway, I mean, I can't get into my house, basically, in the winter if it snows with a slippery driveway because I can't drive into the driveway. So I had to solve that problem. So there's the hardship and also a safety issue with the medication and unsteadiness that sometimes I have to deal with because of the medication. I didn't create, I didn't create this hardship. I, the slope I didn't create, it was there when I bought the house and the driveway was there with the slope when I bought the house. The only thing that wasn't there when I bought the house was the carport. So, so I haven't created anything. The granting of the variance is in harmony with the purposes and intents of land use code. I'm not sure what the harmony really, you know, that's not my determination to say it's in harmony with. It's not obstructing, it's not injurious to any neighborhood or neighbors. I'm not encroaching on their property, going to number six. Not detrimental to the public welfare. The variance will not result in the extension, expansion or enlargement of non-conforming structures. I'm not gonna, I'm not doing, trying to do anything but keep what I have. So I'm not asking to do anything but to keep the structure that's there. For the time that's allowed, if they're going to put in sidewalks and then I'll be more than glad to say, okay, you're going to put in a sidewalk, I need to do something with this. I'm not going to try to prevent or fight the sidewalk going in if it truly will go in. If it's just something that may happen, I'd like to have as much use out of the carport as possible while it doesn't happen. So I think, I'm not sure, correct me if I'm wrong, I've covered those issues.
Is there anyone else who wanted to speak in favor of the applicant? If you'd like to come forward to the podium, please, and give your name?
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Gary Ponson and I'm a Vietnam veteran and I have two total new replacements and I live right next door to Jeff and I live right next, the following block with Mr. Lucero. And as a veteran walking around the blocks and everything, when you get grades like that, it's an awful feeling on your knees. And I just want to speak, if there's any way you can help these guys because they're getting old. I'm 61, I'm getting older too. And if there's any way you can help my neighbors, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Have you been sworn in? Okay, yeah, if you'll come up and give your name?
Madam Chair, Councilman, my name is Steve Lucero and I live a block from them. And what happened is I was in the process of putting in a carport, just like he did.
So it was you?
Yeah, it was me. So I went to the office to make sure that everything was legal of what I was wanting to do and I was informed that I could not do it. And I said to Jamie, I said, "Well, why not?" And then she told me about the 20-feet setback that you gotta have. I said, "Well," I said, "I've seen a lot of carports that are not 20 feet back." And she said, "Well, in the last two years is when it was passed," which I didn't know about that. But since I was going to put a carport in, I wanted to make sure with the city that I was in line. And that's why I went to your office. My only concern is if he can have one, why can't I have one? I would like to see there be like consistency that if he can have it, why can't I have it? And I'm on the north side also where I would want to put the carport.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, uh-huh, if you'd like to step up and give your name, please. Oh.
Thank you. I just want to say one, one other, one last thing. He has a valid argument, obviously. There are some extenuating circumstances why I'm asking for the variance. Whether or not he has the same extenuating circumstances or not, I don't know. But for his argument, there are other people that have these carports that are not within the 20-foot setback. So just, and, and the 2010 land use code change that gave, gave us this 20-foot setback now basically has prohibited me and other people like Mr. Lucero from having full use of their property. Now, it's, I'm not really arguing that part of the land use code that says the 20-foot setback, but I think there's a valid point there that he feels that, hey, if other people can have it, why can't I have it? I kind of agree with him in, in some ways on that. Because if other people have it, why would they be grandfathered in? If, if it's really that bad? In other words, to have a carport that doesn't have the 25-foot setback. And that's, that's really sort of my point, aside from my extenuating circumstances, that the full use of your own property is being prohibited in some ways. Because if I used that 20-foot setback, it would go, I would have a carport in my garage. And, you know, that doesn't, so I can't really have a carport, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Rudolph? I, I do have one quick question, if you'll come back up to the podium. Are, when you were looking at carports, are there carports available that would have been shorter, maybe not covered the full truck, but covered the walking area?
No ma'am. There, there's only a single-car carport, which is what I got. And that's the standard size. Could they custom make one? You know, I'm not sure that, when I had the contractor come out and do the measurement, she measured for a single-car carport. And that's, that's what she put in. Originally, I wanted to do a double-car carport on the slope and she said it couldn't be done because of the legs had to be too high to make it even or something. And I said, "Fine, you know, let's do the bottom one, I, I want, I need this carport, I need something dry, a dry area in the winter." So when I walk out to my vehicle, I have a dry area. And that was the whole point of the, the whole thing, was just keeping the area dry so it wasn't slippery and dangerous. And the older I get, the more I'm going to need that carport or a dry area. Now, if I could park in the garage, if there was no slope and I could park a vehicle in the garage, that lower area where the carport is, is not a garage, it's a workshop. So there's no parking the car in there, so I can't do that. The slope prevents me from even getting up the drive in a slippery situation to put it in the garage, so I can't do that. So, so there's, there's real valid reasons why I have this carport, for safety, safety factor. And that's my whole argument, is just based on safety. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I've got a question for the staff, is now the time to ask that?
Yes, well, was there anybody who wanted to speak in, in opposition? Didn't think so, okay, so, yeah, let's try another question.
Okay. Madam Chair, I, I just wondered, to clarify something for me. So this variance would basically be us permitting the applicant to have the portion of the carport that's on his property. The decision we make tonight has nothing to do one way or the other with the portion of the carport that is in the public driveway. Is that correct?
Well, tonight you're hearing the variance, which is about the 20-foot setback.
Right.
But with it being a single-unit carport and as Mr. Rudolph stated, he can't really cut it down. That's why he's making both applications. Because this has to pass and the encroachment permit has to pass, both of them. And they are two separate issues, but with it being one unit, they are somewhat related.
But let's say we were to pass this and let's say, again, this is entirely hypothetical, the council should elect not to approve an encroachment permit for this.
Right.
We, our variance would still stand, so he could remove this carport and build another one that's solely on his property or he could in some way trim this down, correct?
Yes.
I have a question for staff also. Could you expand a little bit on in what ways this request doesn't meet the findings number four and five? That is, in what ways is it not consistent with the town's comprehensive plan? And in what ways is it not in harmony with the purposes of the land use code?
So our role is not to, it's an affirmative requirement. He needs to, the applicant needs to say why he thinks it's in favor, we just don't think it is. But it's not our duty to say why we don't think it is and to prove it and to demonstrate it. It's your job to hear his case and determine whether he has made the case or not. We, we don't think it meets it, but that's your decision. We're not trying to prove that it doesn't. We're asking or reminding you that he needs to prove that it does.
Okay, and just as someone who's relevant, I would be helpful to know, just because it helps us, you know...
The issue in general about the concern is exactly Mr. Lucero's issue about if you do it here, why not there and how about over here, et cetera. And, you know, the other issue is that as the town tries to enhance the access through all the parts of the town, to the degree that we're encumbering the areas that provide that potential access, you're not living up to the goal of increasing the walkability of the town, which is definitely far as the land use code. That's offset by, you know, his affirmation that should the town construct a sidewalk, he'd remove it. But there's the, the sort of, are you walking the talk? If you want to improve accessibility, if you want to, you know, another part of it is, you know, setbacks are primarily in residential areas tied to preserving the character of the neighborhood. You know, these places were designed with setbacks in them and as people encroach into the setback, you're altering the character of the neighborhood. So, I mean, there's a lot of arguments like that that can be made, that are sort of tracked to a certain extent. But, but again, the responsibility here is to affirmatively demonstrate that the finding can be met.
Thank you, that's helpful, it kind of gives, helps give me an idea of what kinds of things lie behind that. I have a couple of questions for staff. First, even before this code, there were setbacks in the prior code, were correct? Would this still apply?
So, there's two elements here that are kind of, I mean, yes, there were setbacks and the setbacks on the corner lots are typically 10 feet and not 20 feet. But because there was so much concern about garages being converted to second bedrooms and losing the, or garages being converted to workshops and losing the off-street parking requirement, the new code said, well, you need to preserve a 20-foot area which is adequate to park a car off-street. So even if the garage is converted, you still have room to park on your lot. In this case, the garage conversion to a workshop creates the problem, there's not enough room anymore. That's one issue. The other issue has to do with the dealers of the carports. Commonly, you don't need a building permit for one of these little metal carports. Well, you saw the picture of them, they're quite common. But you do need a zoning permit if you're going to put it in the setback. And so it's been an issue with us, working with the dealers, to tell them, although you don't need a building permit, you do need to check on the setbacks. And occasionally, apparently, sometimes the, the, the salespeople are not familiar with the code or maybe they're familiar and just worry about asking forgiveness rather than permission. I'm not sure what the strategy is. But it is an issue that the carports pop up and we don't trigger to discover it until it's there or unless someone actually comes in and says, "Gee, is this okay?" And then the answer is, "Well, no, actually it's not." You would need a variance to do this.
And you might not be able to answer this question, but I was hoping that you knew from having spoke to them. The town engineer stated that the line of sight is obscured. The line of sight, now the sidewalk is obscured, but do they also feel it is somehow obscured to traffic in the street?
No, I spoke to the town engineer and he was just referring to pedestrian traffic.
Pedestrian traffic only, okay. And what is the state of how the town is, I know the goal is to have sidewalks in neighborhoods. Are we actively pursuing that in this neighborhood or in other neighborhoods? And do we know when on a calendar it could reach the Silver Heights neighborhoods?
I don't know when it would be on the calendar, but we've just finished up the ICP this year with the town council and sidewalk installation and repair has been doubled in cost, the funding, to $100,000 every year. And there were at least three projects on my ICP that included sidewalk construction and repair. And I know one was near that neighborhood, but I'm not, I don't remember if it was on that street.
Cactus Street?
On Cactus.
Cactus.
And then, Mr. Rudolph, yeah, thank you for coming up to the podium.
Six years ago, I made a request to repair the sidewalk in front of my home, which is crumbling and have not heard a word, six years. And it's virtually dangerous and I can't afford to fix it myself. And I understood that if the city did it, that I would have to share the cost, which I never got anything from them. So as far as sidewalks are concerned, there's a lot of issues on the, on the street that need to be addressed. The street itself is falling apart. I personally went out and put cement by my driveway in the street to stop the crumbling as much as possible because no one's done anything in the neighborhood to fix the streets or the sidewalks. So, like I said, if there is a plan to put sidewalks in on that, that area that they haven't done in 50 years or 60 years, I'd be more than willing to comply. I'm not looking to subvert the law or skirt the law. I will do whatever needs to be done. But at least let me have what I have until such time that they're going to definitely put sidewalks in and it's not a pipe dream down the road. Thank you.
My last question for staff is as far as the uniqueness to the applicant, do you know, having, when you've looked this one over, are there other driveways in that neighborhood, on that block, in that very area that have the same basic slope, the same that you know of? of? Do you not know?
The, I can't answer that specifically to all of the properties around there, but it's very common for people to want to put in these little carports. And the setback is an issue for all of us. It's a common issue.
So, Madam Chair. One more little question. We can stick conditions on this, because we always can, in fact. There wouldn't be anything, there wouldn't be any reason why, let's say, if someone were to make a motion, you couldn't make a condition that, for instance, it couldn't ever be further enclosed or, you know, modified beyond its, you know, current state, right? Because that's always the danger. In my view of setbacks anyways, there's a certain openness and the community character that you referred to earlier. And I don't feel like an open, lightweight carport like this does it in the same way that one, that maybe one side has a block wall, or then the carport gets converted into a room, or a workshop, or a garage. And so I think one is very different from the other. So there's no reason why we couldn't do that.
You can put in whatever conditions on it you like. The issue will be fairness to other people who seek the same thing.
Right. I guess I'll go ahead and do it. Madam Chair, I don't like these things, but I'll make a motion that we approve your request for variance 12-03 with the following findings. The hardship the applicant complains is one that's unique to the applicant, rather than one suffered by the neighbors or the general public because of the slope of his driveway and the fact that the parking area is on the north side of the building. The hardship relates to the applicant's land or property. Hardship was not created by the deliberate action of the applicant or by one under his control, and reasonable remedies are not presently available. The granting of the variance is consistent with the town's comprehensive plan. Granting of the variance is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the land use code. Granting of the variance will not be injurious to the neighborhood surrounding the property and otherwise is not detrimental to the public. And the variance will not result in the extension, expansion, or enlargement of a non-conforming structure in violation of the land use code. Will not authorize the initiation of a non-conforming use of land with the following condition, being that the carport not be further enclosed or modified beyond its current state, you know, on other variants being required. And I'd go a little further and, well, I'll leave that alone. If you make a comment later, I'll make a comment.
You're willing to second? So then we can have this special? I guess I'll start. I understand what the applicant is saying about his situation, and I can certainly understand, you know, winter and the ability to get into your home safely. And that relates to the number one. However, I am concerned that it still does not meet being in variance in harmony with the purposes and intent of the land use code. And had the applicant come before us prior to building it, based on that, and the town's comprehensive plan not meeting that, I would suspect he could not meet the seven findings. And I would have a hard time saying yes based on those, because you have to meet all seven findings. And while I realize, you know, his driveway has something of a slope, to drive into something with that level of slope, I see a whole lot more in town that have a worse slope than that, and deal with that, driving in and getting into a garage. And so again, I think I have to question a little bit whether or not it's unique in that situation. So I guess I'll start with that, and see if you have any comments on that.
Okay. I don't know the problem. I don't know, I don't have comments on your discussion. I was just volunteering my opinion. But part of me, part of me wants to pass the buck on this and say we are only dealing with this setback area, and really it's the town council's decision as far as the right of way is concerned. However, I do, I do think that our decision should be treated as some sort of recommendation, and how we treat this setback is kind of, in a way, showing the council how we feel about the extension into the, the encroachment into the right of way as well. So, you know, do I think that the 20-foot setback is prohibited? Probably, you know, that is, you know, on a lot like this, it does seem pretty far back. But I do think that those setbacks have been in place, and probably, you know, this would have been in violation even before this new setback. As far as the encroachment into the right of way, a lot, a lot of times, those encroachments are granted in areas where, you know, the, the, the right of way extends very far beyond the curb where, you know, there's already a lot of stuff that's already in the, the right of way, or there's already a sidewalk there, and there's no possibility of anything else ever going in there, all the, all the improvements are already there. And in this case, you know, there is opportunity for that sidewalk to be extended. And I apologize for your experience with the town as far as the maintenance of the sidewalk. Planning does hold, you know, sidewalks and probably to a higher priority than, you know, other people might, and it's unfortunate, you know, that, you know, sometimes, you know, we have the best intent, and it doesn't always happen in the real world that these sidewalks go in, but we have to keep hoping that we follow our comprehensive plan and try and encourage those sidewalks going in in whatever way possible. And I think by approving this setback, it's kind of, kind of saying that we, in a way, encourage the encroachment as well, or that's how I feel, my vote, what my vote would do. And I can't say I can encourage that. I can, I can see your point, you know, let, let you enjoy it, because in the encroachment conditions, you know, there is a condition that with it, if you give the town, the town is, if the town gives you 90 days' notice, you have to remove it. And so I do see your point in, you know, let you enjoy it for the time being. I'm going to leave that up to the council. I just, you know, I just think that with my vote, I would like to make a recommendation that we encourage these sidewalks to go in and discourage people from putting improvements where there could be sidewalks, just as your neighbor would like to do. And I think that's where I'm gonna, I'm gonna go with, with my vote.
These lines are a little bit difficult, because it's a case where I'd like to see the fellow be satisfied for his needs, but I don't think that it meets the requirements of the code. So I feel bound to follow the code. Reasonable remedies are not available. There, I have driven past there, and certainly parking spaces could be made if the question is access to the residents. There are, I think, better places to put a parking space for, whether it's a carport or what's called a covered parking space. And I think that it's detrimental to the public welfare to have, the vehicle, if he's pulled all the way in there, it's still, it's still abouts into the right of way. And I, I think that's detrimental to the public welfare to have, have a permanent parking space that encroaches on the right of way.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Speaker.
You know, you just brought up the piece of the puzzle that I was missing, which was, in my mind, I've been keeping the two issues separate, which is the reason I asked the question to staff earlier about the encroachment versus the variance. I've served on the Planning and Zoning Commission once before, under the previous iteration of the land use code. And during the more than year that I served on the Planning and Zoning Commission that time around, I remember handing out several of these in this neighborhood and the neighborhood that adjoins it. They're relatively common. And so, in my mind, I didn't have a problem with the setback, because in my mind, and again, this is my interpretation of what we're trying to achieve with setbacks in the land use code, and what we're trying to achieve in our comprehensive plan, is some, some sort of uniformity within the neighborhood. And to my mind, a lightweight carport, a lightweight aluminum carport like this, doesn't read to me like a structure. You know, you're not cutting off a sightline down the street, you're not cutting off that setback in the same way that you do if you build a block wall, if you build a building. To me, it comes much closer to the mailbox, or, you know, lamp in the front yard, or fountain. It's a feature rather than, even though it's permanently affixed to the ground, it's not really a permanent structure the way I consider it to be. So that's, that was the way I was thinking of this. And so, bore it up to me, and I don't hear the encroachment permit, and I'm not on the council, that's up to them. But if it were up to me, I'd say, he can have the pieces on his property, and I don't believe, I think there should be a bright light, and there should not be any more encroachments on the public right of way. That's the town's property, and that has gone on far too long, and it shouldn't go on any longer. And so that's how I was thinking of this, and that's how my motion was crafted. But you did just point out that even if we leave the portion, or allow him to have the portion of the carport that's on his property, if you park a vehicle there, it's always going to block the sidewalk, even when, when, when a sidewalk is built. So we're creating a nice covered parking space that you couldn't legally use. And that is a problem.
As a follow-up on that, I know that, I know it is frustrating that the city doesn't get to sidewalks and streets and things, but obviously the city has the desire to do that. It's money that stops them. So if all of a sudden they had a bank of money come in saying, this is for sidewalks to cover the town, we would put sidewalks in the town. Silver City just does not have that kind of fund. But sidewalks are a safety in and of themselves. Pedestrians walking on, in streets, because there are no sidewalks, actually, there are more accidents, pedestrian accidents because of it. So I do think that sidewalks are, in and of themselves, a safety issue and a positive issue. And if it came down to the city coming into neighborhoods and having to build their, finally being able to build sidewalks, but they have various houses that they have to go to and go through the process of getting changes that, like this, you know, now you need to take out your carport, that becomes costly and timely for the city to do that. So every time a variance like this would be accepted, you're just creating that much more time, money for the city in the future, should we be able to get to sidewalks. So I think those are two other factors to consider.
I think we need to, and this, it still bothers me. I read in the current code very carefully, and I think a person can make the case that these white carports are not, are not buildings. And the code does encourage parking spaces that tend to extend to the lot line, but they have to be contained entirely within the lot. If you provide a parking space, and they even reference covered parking spaces, but I think that's probably an issue for another time. But if, I think that question's going to come up, the building versus a covered parking space.
Can I ask a question of the applicant?
Yes, if the applicant will come to the podium, I think he has something to say after your question, too.
Okay. My question is, the pictures that staff provided to us as part of their presentation to us this evening show your car, your truck parked under the carport. Is that truck, is that as far forward as you can pull that truck? Is a vehicle parked there always going to be parked where that vehicle is parked?
I can pull a little farther forward, which would allow a sidewalk, I mean, it wouldn't go on the sidewalk. It wouldn't be parked on the sidewalk. But there is a question about this sloped driveway, that if a sidewalk goes in, I won't have access to my driveway, because the sidewalk would have to be flat, and the driveway is sloped. And that driveway, like I said, has been there for decades. So what would happen with that sidewalk being there would eliminate my access to my property. So, so I don't know. I mean, I bought the house like that, and so it's kind of a strange situation all the way around. And as far as the, like I said, the only, we were talking about safety, that's the only reason really why I really would like to have, continue to have the carport as long as possible, because it is a safety issue, and it's not a matter of trying to do something that someone else can't do. You know, I want a variance just because I want a variance. I mean, there are issues of safety here, not just the spirit of the land use code. There is a hardship, and I implore you to please look at the hardship as much as you look at the land use code that I have. And the fence, that the carport has not passed, the fence has been there again for decades before I ever bought the house. So, you know, it's not like I want, I'm encroaching any more than it's already been encroached. I'm not encroaching any more on the right of way than has been encroached for decades. And again, if they're going to put sidewalks in, I'm more than willing to comply. I will sign anything that says I will comply within 90 days or whatever. I will not fight it if those sidewalks truly will go in. Will be totally supportive with that. But I won't have access to my property either. So I'll probably have to fight at least the driveway portion of my, of the sidewalks, which would break up the sidewalk by 30 or 40 feet at least, I would think. That's all I can say.
I understand the hardship, and that does, I agree with your hardship, but it does meet the number one. I totally agree with you, and I sympathize with you on that. Unfortunately, we have to meet all seven findings. And that one doesn't necessarily overcome the others, so you do have to be able to prove the others also.
Is there something that I haven't proved? I thought I had gone over all the things that have been required, and it was the spirit that I was not really clear about, and...
I understand that. Yeah, you certainly don't have to be an expert on our land use. So I guess the spirit of it is that we do want sidewalks, and we do want the safety of sidewalks for pedestrians, and that is our goal.
Right.
And so that would be fall under, that, and then in harmony with the purposes and intent of the land use code, which is along similar lines.
So, so are there two of the seven that I haven't proven?
Obviously, number two, it does relate to your land or property, that's obvious, because it's your land.
Okay, right, right.
Okay, so that one, you kind of can just bypass, because it's very obvious. It was not created by deliberate action of the applicant. Your hardship was not created by you. So that's number three.
Right.
And that one's obvious. It's, I think the ones that are in question are, and maybe we can have some more discussion mine us here, are numbers four, five, six, and by injuries to the neighborhood and pedestrian properties, basically, public welfare. What is the idea that sidewalks are for public welfare?
Yeah.
And number seven. So you, you really would need to speak to numbers four, five, six, and seven. And I understand you don't, we don't expect you to, like I said, have a full use of, I'm understanding the land use code entirely, but understanding that sidewalks are part of the land use code, and that they're considered priority for safety, for harmony of neighborhoods, et cetera. Yeah, you do have to speak to that one.
I appreciate that, and, and like I said, it's, the sidewalks, there are no plans for the sidewalks to go in, so at this point, or any future definitive date. So I think that the, we're talking about number six?
Yes, number, well, number five and six.
Number five and six. So we're looking at something that may happen in the future, rather than what we... So we're looking at something that may happen in the future, rather than what we have right now, and what we have right now is no sidewalks, and sidewalks that aren't being fixed, and roads that aren't being fixed, so, and I'm very willing to comply if the sidewalks are gonna go in, but there are no plans. So, um, I'm employing the, the, the commission to say, "Well, okay, you got the carport," and we're not asking to put the carport in. The carport was put in, my only, my only folly was not to come and find out from Peter Russell whether or not I could put it in, and believing the contract of the salesperson. So, if I'm at fault at anything, I think was being a little naïve. Other than that, I think I have met all of the criteria, and I'm not sure about the spirit, what that really means, and that's what you have to decide. What, I ask that you not think so much in the future, because I will comply if that does happen, uh, how about right now, and what we have right now, which is a situation, there is a hardship. And in the future, if the sidewalks are gonna go in, I will comply. So I'm not asking for you to, to absolve me from any future obligation to take care of the carport, or remove the carport, or if that needs to be, but to, to give me some consideration at this point, that's all I'm asking.
I have a que, I have a question for you about the safety issue.
Okay.
If you didn't have the carport, but you just parked your vehicle where it is, then could you just walk into your workshop from there?
Well, yeah, but there is ice that create, is created on that area, too, because it is a northern exposure.
Uh-huh.
And there is ice that builds up right there.
So even though it's not a slope, you're-
It's not a slope, it's still very icy. And that's, and that's something that, you know, if I was a 20-year-old, or a 30-year-old, or a 40-year-old, or even a 50-year-old, um, I would say, you know, I can deal with the ice somehow, and, but, you know, I'm get, I'm a senior citizen, and I'm not getting any younger. And the more, the more I can cover an area to eliminate an ice situation, to eliminate the slippage situation, the better, the safer I'm gonna be.
Yeah.
I live, if I fall down-
So you are at least, you are at least, like, it covered from the cab of your vehicle to-
Yeah, it's, at the very minimum, and if-
That might be a solution.
And if, if, like I said, if, um, the encroachment is not granted, because the fence, again, has been an encroachment for decades, so I'm not encroaching anymore than it's already been encroached. But if they say, "No, you can't have the encroachment," and you're just not gonna have it, um, I can find out in, about having that cut down to a point where I'm not encroaching anymore. So, you know, that, that's a possibility, absolutely.
Sure. Madam Chair?
Yes.
Since, since you're up there, regardless of what else happens here tonight, I hope that you will, if you have not already communicated to your contractor, that she has now had a problem.
I did do that. I, I, as a matter of fact, I went to her as soon as I got this, and I said, "Hey, you told me that there was no problem." I talked to Jamie, and Jamie says, "We have had issues with this con, this salesperson, and she knows darn well that there's a setback, and this and that, and blah, 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 blah." So there's a little bit of malfeasance going on here with this contractor slash salesperson. I don't think she has a contractor's license, because she actually sells the buildings, and they come in from someplace else, and they erect them. But I really believe that there is some malfeasance going on here, and, and I haven't presented that to her, I was just, I was just kind of aggravated that she's told me that there was, she's been doing this for six years and never had a problem. Well, whoa, wouldn't you know it, I get the, I get the problem, so, so, uh-
Mr. Hattler, you want to just, can you come up to the podium again? Thank you, Mr. Hattler.
Gary, you guys are talking all about the sidewalks and everything, and Steve's had that fence right where the edge of his carport is, and all the way down to Swan Street, there are no sidewalks. On the opposite side of the street, the fences are right up to the curb, all the way up to Juniper Street, and the other side of Juniper Street. And then I walk two dogs, the little Yorkies, but the sidewalks walking down Yucka Street to the women's club? The reason I don't, I walk four miles every day, but I just walk that because of the dogs, 'cause the sidewalks are so torn up. And then I leave my dogs there, and then I go to Fox Field, and I go do my walking for my therapy. And, you know, here it sounds like now, sidewalks are the issue and everything, his, his garage is even with the same fence that's been there, so I bought before Steve, Jeff bought there. It's not, not even nothing over, it's even, it's not bothering nobody. I can't understand what's wrong with America. Thank you.
Um, I noticed there is a, in the density and dimensional standards, there's a special cases, and it says on a corner lot where 20-foot front setbacks are required on two sides, one setback may be reduced to a minimum of 10 feet. Is that applicable in this situation, or would that make a difference?
I know it's a little bit humanoid to ensure that there is off-street parking on the lot, and so, uh, we want to ensure that there's off-street parking by guaranteeing the 20-foot, which is the depth of a car. And that's why the carport and the garages need to be set back to that amount.
But is this just an administrative decision, as far as reducing it to 10 feet, or it's not something that's-
No, I don't think so, because it's called out specifically, the garages must be 20 feet separate from regulars, in fact.
Okay.
I mean, I, I agree that there's places all over town where, you know, there are encroachments, the setback, or, or, the encroachment is a public right of way. The issue is, you're, uh, being asked to authorize it.
Important.
You're being asked to say, "Yes, this is okay." We would certainly like to stop digging the hole we're in, and then address the issues as they, uh, as the opportunity arises, and specifically, the opportunity specifically, we do want to put a sidewalk in here, and now we're going to require you to remove it. But the issue presented to you is asked permission.
Certainly, certainly-
It's there.
We don't, we don't like these pictures that you've provided, we really don't, to see the, you know, the, where, the, the ones that are right on, on the Swan Street, but we didn't have a choice in those, and these ones, we do have a choice in, and that's, you know, well, I don't, I don't like to see this just, just as much as the people that have to walk around it, you know, and that have no sidewalk to walk on, and, and in this case, we have a choice, and, you know, we, we can either, you know, say, I, I mean, you certainly have a hardship, so, I mean, that, that's easy to, to determine, it's, you know, we just have to balance that out with, um, the needs of, of the community as well, you know, and, um, I don't know.
We're, how does me having that carport, that I'm more than willing to comply with if sidewalks go in, how does me having a carport obstruct any need, or subvert any need of the community? I don't understand why that would be an issue. In other words, it's, I, I understand Peter's point about digging a hole, and, and let's, let's put a stop to certain things that shouldn't be done in neighborhoods. And there are encroachments, and there are other issues in every neighborhood. But I'm not just asking it because I want, I want something for me, and there's no reason but the fact that I want it. There are extenuating circumstances. I am more than willing to comply if sidewalks go in. So I don't see where there's a real issue about, if somebody else comes to you and says, "I want to put a carport in," and they have the same issue that I do, then, and you have given me that variance, then you might want to give them the variance, if their issue is the same, or just as, or more severe. Case by case, I don't think it should be blanket that nobody can do this, when you have so much that's in noncompliance from before, the 2010, that do the case by case and say, "Well, does this person have a valid reason?" Or eliminate all the noncompliance from that 40 years ago. Say, give, send them all letters, and say, "You're in noncompliance. You're in, you're encroaching." There's so much encroachment in this town, it's unbelievable. And as far as setbacks, you go to, um, you go to, um, Chihuahua Hill, and houses are built almost on the street. You know, so, so, what's, what's the, what's the criteria, what's the standard? Did you make a new standard as of 2010? Well, yeah, okay, but now you're disallowing my full use of my property. So, you know, I, I agree with what Peter's saying as far as trying to have a nice neighborhood with sidewalks and, and have a grand plan, but is that grand plan gonna happen anytime soon? And do we disallow everyone from having carports that are not within the regulations, regardless of their situation? I think that's a little harsh. That's my case. I, I, I think you have to take it case by case, to be fair.
So can I amend my motion? I'd like to add a second condition to the motion earlier. The second condition being, um, that the, that the cars must be parked in the carport so that they don't obstruct public right of way without an encroachment, I mean. I don't know if that's possible or not, and that's sort of already the law, but I think that'll make clear kind of what our issues are, and what we're going for, provided the motion should pass.
And Commissioner Prolk, do you want to still second that one, or anybody else want to second that one, the new condition?
I'll, I'll still second it.
Madam Chair, you have a question?
Commissioner Hattler, yes.
You have a question?
Oh, oh, oh. My hearing. Okay, uh, I think we'll go ahead and do a call for, um, I, I still have a question for staff. Um, if the applicant were to find a way to, uh, cut off the, the part that is extending into the, the right of way, and come to us for another variance, would it be considered a new request, or would he have to wait, like, the year, or whatever it takes to?
Perhaps a good question.
My concern is, my concern is what our decision, what effect our decision would have on the encroachment hearing, and if we, if, if there is a way for it to just fit into the setback, you know, or, you know, there's a way around that, then I would be willing to reconsider, but, you know, I don't know, if, if we deny it today, and then he finds a way to do it, and he's already denied, you know, I don't know if he has to wait another year to, to come back, or how, how that works.
So the issue that Commissioner Prolk was bringing up is that typically, if someone makes, um, an application for a, um, a, a variance or some action, and is denied, they can't just refile it right away and say, "Oh, well, I'll try again." They have to wait a year. That's the standard. The issue here is that this is a request for an encroachment, but it's packaged with a request for an encroachment also. So, um, my guess would be if he, he came back and was only asking for the encroachment, you could, I, I guess you could hear it again, but what would, my, what I would think would happen here is that if you deny it, um, then Mr. Rudolph will appeal, and I, I think would be, you know, his course of action. And so then the council would be hearing both simultaneously anyway. And so, I, I guess if the appeal is denied, it wouldn't be reasonable to hear it again within a year. On the other hand, if he doesn't appeal it, um, then maybe you could hear it. There's a lot of qualifiers in there, I guess, I'm not entirely clear of the course forward.
Madam Chair, I wonder, for staff, the report that's forwarded on to the council, obviously, will have the motion that we made tonight, should we approve this. Will that report also include any of our concerns about the encroachment into right of way, or will those not be forwarded on to the council? In other words, is this motion the only voice that we have that goes forward, or will your report include the other concerns that we voiced?
Um, typically, it's just the presentation, and then your decision, but you can ask that specific minutes be made of this discussion, so that the council knows how you sought to address the issue.
I'd definitely like to ask that that happened, should this go forward. And I suppose, one way or the other, it will go forward. Because I don't see any reason to rehear this, because we're not being asked to approve or disapprove that encroachment. That's not up to us.
I, I know, and I, you know, I want to look at it that, you know, we're just dealing with the setback, and let the council make their own decision, you know, I-
Madam Chair, there is a call for a question.
Yes. Before, is there anything else to respond to? Okay. I've called for those.
Would you like that to be a roll call?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Swimman?
I'm gonna say no.
Commissioner Peral?
No.
Commissioner Seibel?
Aye.
Commissioner Burby?
No.
Commissioner Lofton?
No.
Commissioner Waterman?
No.
Um, a written decision will be rendered within 14 or 15 days, and you do have 15 days to appeal the decision to the city council. And then the hearing for that is concluded. Okay. Um, I don't see that we have any new business on the agenda. Community forum, I know we don't have one this evening. Mr. Coats, do you think that you might have something for us for the next meeting?
I think it would be quite apropos if I were to bring forward, if, if not as a, as a public, um, hearing on it, but at least, um, informational on a draft pedestrian plan.
That'd be wonderful. Okay. Pedestrian plan, okay. Okay, so that will be done for the October meeting. Okay? Okay. Do we have any further reports from staff? Any, uh, reports from the commission?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I rushed in right at meeting time tonight, because we had a meeting tonight on the proposed metropolitan redevelopment area plan for downtown Silver City, um, and I'll be anxiously awaiting some of the comments that were given to the consultant at that meeting tonight. But, um, depending on what those comments were, um, I expect the plan to go forwards to the town council, hopefully in the next month or so, and so I hope folks will be paying attention to that, and I'd really appreciate support, because it'll be a great toolkit for us to have for doing some, some work downtown that, that needs to be done.
And when is the next, again, when will be the next public?
The timeline has not yet been set. I expect that perhaps-
Um, I expect that perhaps there will be at least some sort of presentation on it, um, perhaps on the twenty-fifth of September, and so folks should be watching the council agendas to see if that should go forward. And, uh, again, if, if folks have questions, or they like information on what that entails, I'd be happy to visit with them, and they can feel free to call me at the, at work or, or at home.
Any other reports from the commission? Should we publicly shame the, the person that sold the, the carpet? Just kidding.
I, I would not have objected if that name were disclosed. It's my place to ask.
Yeah, photos are here. Oh, yes. One, yes, is it available to me, keep one for our record? I wrote all over my-
Why don't you go ahead, and you can have mine, and I'll take yours.
You did a really good job of making your pitch. You, you, I wish you could, you did a really good job.
Madam Chair, if there's no community input, I have moved to adjourn?
Yes, thank you, and be safe.
All right.
We are good.